The board has been an executive session for the past thirty minutes for the purpose of discussing confidential matters as outlined in two zero one. The matters that were discussed will be disclosed to the public as soon as possible, once the reason for non-disclosure is no longer exists. So move. Second. Annette, can you please take the role? Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Quinn.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our announcements. The only thing I'd like to say tonight, Trish isn't here, but her and I were able to attend the preschool information session last week, I believe. And a lot of great information was given to parents. I know there's a lot of parents that are excited that they're going to get free full day preschool for their children. For next year, it'll be expanded to five classrooms, so we'll be able to service many preschool aged children, so I'm very excited about that. Now our superintendent of schools, Dr. Roberta Freeman. And we do this quite often, that's exactly what I was going to talk about. But Madam President took care of it for us, and one of our preschool teachers, they're in the crowd, and look at that smile on her face. So you can see how preschool is going. I just want to remind everyone that preschool registration is open. It closes on March twelfth, so it'll be open for an entire month. The steps for preschool preregistration can be found on the website. Follow each one of the steps, and if you have any questions, feel free to call the numbers that are on the infographic. Thank you. Now our business administrator, Board Secretary, Ms. Annette Giordano.
Good evening. Budget work is going on in the business office right now. State aid will hopefully be announced next Friday, and we're hoping it remains flat for the year. There's a lot of talk that there might be cuts, so we're just hoping at a minimum that we get, you know, the same amount of state aid that we got last year. Once we get the state aid numbers, we'll pull everything together that we have, and then it'll be presented at the March. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to our liaison reports. Our Middlesex, oh, we didn't, we have that, but we have not attended yet. We're going to move on from there. Our middle, wait. No, the, um, the legislative and the delegate. That's the New Jersey School Board, New Jersey School Board, yes, delegate and legislative officer. So if you have anything.
So the next legislative meeting is on March fifteenth. The next delegate assembly is five ten. And then the resolution subcommittee that I sit on are, will be hearing any potential resolutions on April first and second. So I'm hopeful that we will have the information on the resolutions by our April twenty fourth meeting, so that we can discuss them before the delegate assembly on five ten. And I did attend the Middlesex County Virtual Meeting on two six. The speaker was Vin Gopau. And then the Unsum Heroes for Middlesex County is on three twenty six, and the spring meeting is five twenty one. As always, if you want to sign up for any of the county meetings, you can sign up on your own, because they cost no money. If you want to attend any of the trainings that cost money, it has to go through the business office.
Thank you, thanks. And our Middlesex Public Library Board of Education Representative, Ms. Erin Gomez.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have anything to report tonight.
Thank you. And our student representative, Ms. Arshid Parmar.
Respected board members, teachers, activities and parents, and my mom. Good evening. Last week I had a great opportunity to talk with Mr. Serna with Block Parker Elementary School, where he shared a few wonderful events held at Parker Elementary School with me. And every morning, kids are welcomed to the school with African drumbeats, which you just heard, and it was such a wonderful performance, which is played freestyle by trained music students, and these drums carry historical significance, teaching patience and teamwork to students. Now these drumbeats are referred to as the heartbeat of school, as it gives immense energy and makes students feel welcome at the same time. Other than this, there are many more events held every month, keeping students active and making school more fun, such as having a play day in August, barbecue in September, parents are also invited, night events, craft events, coin challenge, and many more fun events. Another thing to highlight is hardworking teachers at Parker who adopted to the new curriculum, because it was set for the betterment of students. And as we know, our teachers can go above and beyond our students. Also, teachers, counselors, and staff are very quick to respond at Parker to any problem or issue held within the school body. I do have some great news to share with you, but currently it's a secret. And I hope, and I hope that by the next meeting, I'll be able to share it. Dr. Freeman knows the news. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Mr. Nicolai also has, he would like to present something.
Thank you, Danielle. I would just like to update the board and the public on negotiations between successor agreement between the Middlesex Education Association and the Middlesex Board of Education. At this time, the Middlesex Education Association and the Middlesex Board of Education continue to work towards a final agreement. The negotiation process remains ongoing, as both parties continue to work toward a mutually beneficial resolution. The two teams, two negotiating teams have met eight times between May and September of two thousand twenty four. During this meeting, numerous issues have been discussed, and progress was made toward a resolution. At which time, a mediator was selected and was scheduled to meet in November. However, due to unavoidable conflict by the mediator, the session was postponed. The next available date for all parties was Monday, January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. During this January twenty seventh session, the mediator met with both parties and spent over four hours discussing several outstanding issues. Despite the extended session, it was determined the second session would be necessary to continue addressing these unresolved matters. This follow-up session has now been scheduled for Monday, March twenty fourth. Basically, the, the open issues that we have been discussing while we've met those eight times is that the Board of Education has the right to implement block scheduling at the high school. The union has the right to then negotiate the impact of block scheduling, the change that occurred. At this point, the wages that have been offered are at or above the county average. And in conclusion, we understand that the ongoing negotiations can be frustrating for those involved. However, the negotiation team for the Middlesex Board of Education is diligently working towards a fair and amicable resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, we'll move on to item five, approved board meeting minutes. There are meeting minutes there from the committee of the whole on January twenty second and our regular public meeting on January twenty third. There are also corrections and revisions to previous board agendas. Superintendent recommends approval of items five point zero one to five point zero two as presented. So move. Second. Any questions on either of those? Actually, I believe the committee of the whole was the twenty first. Oh, was it? Yes. Yep, that's, it's Tuesday, Thursday. Which it says it's right on the minutes, it's just wrong on the title. Oh, on the title there. So Committee of the Whole on January twenty first, and our regular meeting on January twenty first. Okay, Annette, can you please take the role?
Mrs. Florenzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Schuler?
Yes.
Mrs. Bayachek?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicolai?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Thank you. We will now open the public comment portion of the meeting. Comments at this time are limited to agenda items only. Please come to the podium and put your name, address, email address, and subject of your comment into the record book. Before speaking, please keep your name, address, and subject of your comment to Ms. Annette Giordano, Business Administrator, Board Secretary. Director, comments and questions to the board president. You may speak on two separate topics for up to three minutes each.
Good evening, I'm John O.C. You see me talk a lot about the M E A. It's not like I'm a spokesperson. It's, I've been talking about since the contract expired in July. I almost find myself an umpire calling balls and strikes. Right now, it's not looking too good. First, you didn't settle a new contract before the original one expired. That's almost a failure of leadership. Letting a contract lapse is not an oversight, it's a choice. A choice that tells teachers their financial stability, their security, and their financial futures, or there any of their futures, come second to whatever goal you have in mind. I truly value the educators, not let them work without an agreement in place. And let's be honest, this didn't sneak up. Your teachers, staff of the community have been rallying for a contract for months. You can see impact board meetings, unity in shirts. And public police required fair treatment. Last month, the M E A stood right outside this very building on a cold January day to rally and fight for a fair contract. You had time, you had warnings, you had opportunities to get this right. Strike one. Second, the offers you put on the table are not competitive, and it almost seems like you're missing the point. According to the report you just read, you almost addressed none of the issues that were published in the N J E A report. Not only block, maybe block scheduling, but it talks about competitive time for extra, or competitive pay for extracurriculars. And just generally having a feeling of disrespect. It's not necessarily about getting your average or above-average wages. It's just likewise. I cannot build a strong school system on weak offers. And it's not just a numbers game, it's bigger than that. It's about whether it's whether your, the district respects the educators at hand. Right now, it almost seems like you're treating them dislocably, because right now, it's flat and clear. They're almost being told, we don't value you, and when you have valued teachers, they leave. And when they leave, there's only one person that really loses, and that's the students in the district. Strike two. Third, more and more teachers are leaving, whether it's by resignation or early retirement, and these aren't just educators finishing thirty or forty year careers. These are teachers retiring the moment they hit the minimum age and walking away as soon as they can. That's not a coincidence. It's the district failing its people. The district that makes educators feel respected and supported doesn't see wave after wave of early retirements. The district that prioritizes teachers doesn't have to beg people to stay, and yet, here we are. At tonight's agenda, you can see at item nine oh seven, you have two retirees, which some, I know they're right around the minimum age of retirement there. It's, no, nothing shouts, we're now being valued and retiring right when you can. And the worst part is that you cannot replace them easily, because who's going to sign up to work in a district where they feel overworked, underpaid, and unappreciated? Strike three. And now you know what that means. Strike three, and you're out. Except this isn't a baseball game, it's just a loss on the scoreboard. It's, this is real, and this is our teachers, our students, and our community. And every time you fail to support the educators, that makes this district what it is. It's not just them who lose, it's everyone. So I ask all of you, what is your next move? Because you're already out. My question now is if you're going to do something about it. Thank you.
Mr. Ford, nobody cares more about our teachers than us. Why, if I'm honest with you, nobody cares more about the teachers.
I understand that.
Nothing to do with sign, negotiating this contract. I'm not sure what you've been told, the way you know, but a lot of what you just said is not true.
Like what parts?
We're not.
All right. If I can just, I'll just, I'll just make an overall response. One, to the extent that you have any, a full scope of negotiations, or one side of the negotiations that's highly inappropriate, it shouldn't happen, you shouldn't have it.
I don't.
The board can't share it with you, the board can't share it with the public. That's one. The second is just a misconception that I'd like to, like to clear up, and that is, contract continues. So there's no such thing as teachers not working without a contract. They don't have a successor contract, but what happens is part of the ongoing negotiations. And part of negotiations is then what happens during that interim time period? That too, as a general rule, I cannot speak to these specific negotiations. Generally, the way that negotiations work, issue also part of the negotiation is what happens during that time period between the old contract and the new contract. So it is just, it is important for all parties to work together, to work together consistently, which is what they in fact are doing. While people may not be happy, and I've never seen any union that wasn't happy, or any board that wasn't happy, when the contracts take a long time to settle. But just because of that does not mean that there was administrative or board or leadership.
I also just don't want to break my mix up. I also just want to remind, at this public comment section, session, it is agenda items only.
I was referring to agenda item four, which was a liaison report from the, which was going to be a liaison report from the negotiating committee. Or I can reference item nine, or ninety seven, which is retirement, which I referenced.
Do you want to open it to this, or wait till the second? Because do you want, I'll talk or I'll wait? I mean, he did reference retirements, so that is fine, but if there, I would wait till the next public comment portion, if it doesn't directly affect something on the agenda. One of the board members spoke to the public about something. Can I just address that?
Why don't you wait till the next session, since it's not a specific agenda item.
Lord Thomas, Bono Lang Green Avenue. Okay, so my first question is on fourteen, fourteen. There is rental of equipment, and I believe that's for graduation. And I think I expressed my feelings at another meeting that everyone has to control their budget and cut back on things, and a little bit, a little bit, a little bit adds up to a lot. So I would hope that you could reconsider and not rent stage and tents and everything for graduation, which lasts an hour. And just, I mean, I graduated from this school, I taught at this school, I know some board members graduated, and chairs were just put out, beautiful flowers, kids walked across a special area, and it seemed to work fine. So I would hope that you would reconsider not spending that money. I have another concern about taking teaching supplies in the transfer today, teaching supplies to go over to administrative supplies. Teachers need supplies, they need their money, and it's going for podiums, which I would think that we would have enough podiums in the school district. I don't know if you can answer me, I could be totally off base with this, but we paid a behavior technician thirteen thousand dollars and seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars of behavioral consultant service. Two thousand three hundred and forty-three, eight thousand five hundred and forty-seven, for four evaluations at five hundred and seventy-five dollars each. I could be totally wrong, I don't know what those were for, but I'm wondering if those evaluations, behavior ones, should be reported on the H I B report. And so four evaluations were done, and there's only three listed here. I think that, I think those have to be reported to the superintendent. I could be wrong. Okay. The bill list. I was here at the last meeting, and I presented a whole list. I did want to take everybody's time with my concerns or questions. So I asked if I could meet with someone that they could explain to me, so I don't have to come to any meeting and ask. So it's a whole other month, and no one ever got back with me. No one met with me, no one sent me an email, phone call, anything. So I have a few questions about the bill list, which I hate to start talking about.
Did you not receive that information in an email?
No, I did not. Who did it come from? The only email I got from the superintendent was
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was job descriptions. Those were the only ones I got. So I know that you can't really explain on the bill list everything, but, for example, substitute service got paid sixty-seven thousand dollars on this bill list. So is that for the month? Is it for the year? Is it for something? I don't know. So that's one of the questions. I know that there was reimbursement to the superintendent for the committee of the whole meetings. It's not a lot of money, but I would like to know what that money was used for. And let's see, what else here? There's just several others of those, but I would love to be able to meet with someone to answer my questions. I have a whole lot on the bill list, but I don't want to take anyone's time.
Can you send an email with the questions that you have about? Okay, yeah, you could give those to Celia.
Well, I gave it to them, gave it to them last meeting.
I have to check my email.
I didn't send an email. I physically handed you papers at this meeting.
Yeah, and I know I wrote everything up, and I have to check my emails to make sure that I sent it to you.
Okay.
But I'm pretty sure that I did, but I have to check my emails.
Okay, well, I looked under your name and my, you know, from people, and I didn't see anything, so. But if you wouldn't mind checking, that would be great.
And then can you give us the questions that you have?
I will, I'll give you those papers. I'll just write my name, and I'm finished.
Okay, I don't see any others, so I'm going to close this public comment portion of the meeting, and we will move on. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment, and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the superintendent of school. If the superintendent is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate board committee. The members of the board committee work with the administration and the superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. And now we will move on to item number eight, our personnel report by our committee chair, Mr. Nicolai.
Thank you, Danielle. We have action items tonight, nine point zero one, appointments contractual. Nine point zero two, salary dates, or none. Nine point zero three, hourly positions. Nine point zero five, extracurricular and co-curricular stipends. Nine point zero six, leave of absence. Nine point zero seven, end of service. Nine point zero eight, staff transfers. Nine point zero nine, salary adjustments. Nine point ten, the community school. Some other, nine point eleven, other personnel action items. Superintendent recommends approval of personnel action items nine point one to nine point eleven as presented, so move.
Second. Any questions on any of that by the board? Okay, Annette, can you please take the role?
Mrs. Florenzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Schuler?
Yes.
Mrs. Bayachek?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yeah.
Mr. Nicolai?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we move on to our education report by our committee chair, Mrs. Perry. Good evening. The superintendent recommends the approval of the education action items eleven one through eleven thirteen as presented, so move. Second. Any questions on that? Okay, Annette, can you please take the role?
Mrs. Florenzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Schuler?
Yes.
Mrs. Bayachek?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yeah.
Mr. Nicolai?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinn?
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to item twelve, policy action items. On twelve point zero one, there is a first reading that got added there. This is directly in response to what we had discussed last night about updating our guidelines for public comment. We have some second readings. We are not adopting anything tonight. The superintendent recommends the approval of policy action items twelve point zero one to twelve point zero three as presented, so move. Second. Any questions? Annette, can you please take the role?
Mrs. Florenzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Schuler?
Yes.
Ms. Bayachek?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yeah.
Mr. Nicolai?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Thank you. We will now move on to our facilities and finance report by our committee chair, Mr. Nicolai.
Thank you, Danielle. Our facilities and finance action items this meeting consist of four point zero on the bills list. Four point zero two, monthly budget transfers. Four fourteen point zero three, board secretary's report. Fourteen point zero four, monthly treasurers report. Fourteen point zero five, S B A administrative monthly certification. Fourteen point zero six, board members monthly certification. Fourteen point zero seven, building uses. Fourteen point zero eight, coordination transportation. Fourteen point zero nine, contract allowance management adjustments of change orders. Fourteen point ten, contracts have been awarded. Fourteen point eleven, participation in the co-op pricing system. Fourteen point twelve, purchase of equipment. Fourteen point thirteen, phone book repair. Fourteen point fourteen, rental of some equipment. Fourteen point fifteen, purchase of a van. Fourteen point sixteen, painting services. Fourteen point seventeen, purchase and installation of a video surveillance system. Superintendent recommends approval of facilities and finance action items fourteen point zero one to fourteen point seventeen, so move.
Second. Any questions on any of that? I just have a question. Did we find out any more information on fourteen point zero seven, number three?
Is that covered in here?
Yes.
Yeah. That in the facilities office staff, like, and he's, that is the tactic.
And then, just want to go back to fourteen point fifteen. I know I asked about this yesterday. I'm just wondering on the need here. I know we purchased or we approved to purchase a truck last month. And that was because I know that one of our maintenance people is using their own vehicle for work-related things. So I'm, I'm still not sure I understand the need to now purchase another vehicle. I know yesterday we discussed maybe, you know, a van is covered versus a truck is not, and keeping equipment, but wouldn't it be more cost-effective if we put a cap on the new truck that we just purchased?
Currently, there's four men in the maintenance department, plus the director of facilities, and they all go backwards between the job things. The pickup trucks were purchased because it's with the flower on it, because now they're doing flowerings and everything. Justin, I know, uses his own truck currently. One of the trucks is pretty much out of the end of its useful life, and two of the other men are using their own vehicles right now. So there's really need to have four vehicles for the guys, and as I said, they're going to use the van to transport some of the equipment, and some of the equipment is large, and it may have to fit in the back of the pickup truck. Or there's pipe cutter machine or something like that. So there really is a need to give guys vehicles.
And then again, on fourteen point sixteen, painting services, was those bids, were they through this this pricing system that we're approving? Or was that something that we did on our own?
No, that's something that we did on our own.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions on any of that? Okay, Annette, can you please take the role?
Mrs. Florenzi?
I'm going to vote now on fourteen point fifteen, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Schuler?
Yes.
Mrs. Bayachek?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yeah.
Mr. Nicolai?
I'm going to refuse from fourteen point zero seven, item number four. items number four and five, and yes to the rest.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinn?
For fourteen point fifteen?
For fourteen point fifteen, I also have a no for that and a yes for the rest.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes for everything, no for fourteen fifteen.
Okay, do you have any ongoing business? New business? Okay, I will open the second public comment portion of the meeting. Comments at this time can be on any topic. Please come to the podium and put your name, address, email address, and subject of your comment into the record. Before speaking, please give your name, address, and subject of your comments to Ms. Annette Giordano, Business Administrator, Board Secretary. Direct your comments and questions to the board president. You may speak on two separate topics for up to three minutes each.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead. Yes, ladies first.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jeanette Pine, one thirty-two Murray Ave, Scataway. Jeanette, find a Gmail. If you need anything else, let her know. Okay. All right, so, gosh, the last time I was here, one of my colleagues came up and mentioned some disparaging comments that she had heard from another superintendent and a principal about how we don't settle contracts. And I crumpled a little bit. And then I went home and I thought, is that all you've got? Because I know Middlesex to be way different than an organization that just doesn't settle contracts. Since I have been here, and in particular, the past few years, I have felt nothing but support, a desire to look ahead to the future, to see things from a different angle. Let me just back up for a second. We used to use a curriculum that was not research-based, but it's what we did and we paid for it, so that's what we did. And I had a conversation with some administrators, some who are in this room right now, and we agreed, it's not working. This doesn't make sense. We have got to look at things differently. And that's painful, and that's costly, and that makes us have to be vulnerable and step out and try something different. And brother, that is not comfortable, but that's who we are. We are forward thinkers here. We step out into the ether and we try our best, knowing as teachers that there's support for us beneath that. I can't tell you what that means to me. So when I hear somebody talking about just the contract and that sums up who we are, I say, you better think again. My friends from Parker said, one of us is all of us. There's no them and us, it's a we. So when I heard Mr. Nicolai talk about the negotiations, I felt like you were very sincere and trying to come up with a solution. And doggone it, that's what we're all here for tonight. We're going to work together because there is no us and then, there's a we. We are all working together. What superintendent have you ever heard of that steps out with a Brene Brown quote? A Brene Brown YouTube clip?
Just, it's, it should be done. And if you don't have the money for it, that position isn't necessary. Those people report directly to the cops. So cancel it, hire two or three of them. Okay? So I also, you know, I'm not going to get into politics, but a Republican president historically gets less money in public education to the states. And voting numbers from November also show a high chance of New Jersey getting a Republican governor. Our last Republican governor, who she spoke about, was Chris Christie. And anyone in education at that time just felt the chill go through their spine. Okay? For anybody who wasn't, it's really simple. A lot less money for districts like us. Okay? So as a district, I really think we should start being proactive, and I hope when the time comes, you focus on what makes education work. Teachers, staff, and safety. Invest in your buildings and grounds. Invest in your teachers. When I started sixteen years ago, we ran with a superintendent and a curriculum director. I prefer these meetings from my couch. I ran here today after I told my kids to bed, but I prefer to not do that. And I do appreciate you all up here taking time away from your families doing that. But I do watch them, hence why I'm here. And if I could describe what I've seen in the past few years, it's you get an admin, you get an admin, you get a non-union secretary, you get a non-union secretary. And listen, if we have the money for it and it betters our district, so be it. Okay? But essentially, when I think about it on weekdays, and I have a pretty nice weekday schedule as a teacher, my kids still spend more time with their teachers and the staff at the school than they spend with me. People at school who teach them, who care for them when they're sick or hurt, who I email or call to send or get information, who clean up after them and make sure their buildings are clean and safe, people who drive them around, these are the people you're saying don't matter right now. We also used to have breakage in our budget every year. That's when the top of the guide teacher would retire and you would hire a new teacher at the bottom of the guide, which in turn would create breakage and money for our district. You could call it the circle of the guide. By approving multiple teachers at the top of the guide, you're not allowing that breakage. And I know you can't comment or understand, but I can tell you, I sat in a negotiation where we were told too many teachers at the top would bankrupt our district. Okay? So I don't understand why a bunch of them are getting approved up there. So I understood the concern last week of commenting and people taking your comments wrong, so I'll help you with some dialogue. Okay? There's a teacher shortage. We have to hire at the top of the guide, otherwise people won't come here. Right? But why would they come here? Fix that in mediation. Anyone with locked scheduling, big or small district, only teaches five classes, which by the way, if your teachers were scheduled to teach five classes, you would still be honoring the current contract. But that wasn't done. Middlesex has never been a high-paying district, but we got and held on to great teachers because they felt valued. They felt like someone had their back. Return to that. Now we have a lot of teachers and in mediation, the teachers at the top of the guide always want money. And is it ever really a significant amount? No. How do you fix that? Well, take this thing away of hiring all these people at the top of the guide and lead them there. Offer longevity to your teachers. Offer an incentive to be here for five, ten, fifteen years. Okay? Those are incentives that teachers are looking for right now. Because again, there's a teacher shortage. Okay? Make us a desirable district again.
I'm very nervous, but I'm proud to say I taught Christine's daughter twice. I'm very lucky to work in elementary school and to have been able to teach her twice.
Can you just give us your name?
Cindy Monero, sorry, Twelve Wood Road Street, Middlesex. Talking about the contract. So we teachers are nothing if not adaptable. Despite full plates, we comply with curriculum changes, meetings, and anything administration asks of us. We work hard to do our best and absorb all the new procedures, changes, and demands that come our way. All we want is a fair deal and a healthy workplace balance. Please settle the contract.
Follow-up question. The first reading of the public comment on the website, it looks identical to the one on Johnson A. website. What was the revision? It doesn't look like there is a revision.
We are working on revisions. That's just so that everybody is aware of what it currently is.
So the, so the first reading, and it's just, so it's not, it is revisions, just not?
They're coming.
All right, so there is no current revision?
No.
All right, that makes sense. And then my second comment is responding to the company that there is no such thing as an expired contract. The only reason why the terms are still in effect, not because of the contract, because state law governing public, public, like, union, union employee relations in the public sector, that the terms are still available, that, it says it right in the law, the contract is expired. In fact, there really is no contract. The terms are still in effect, but there is no contract. I don't, I think it's almost disindemnious to say that there's, it's just a continuation of the contract and it's almost built, baked into the contract.
My comment, hi, Jeremiah Carn, one twenty Shepherd Ave, Middlesex, New Jersey. I'm here as a parent, but also there, you guys are all appreciated, but that's not why I'm here. Last time I was here, there was an issue of an email reception. There was a complaint to be made. I emailed the board of ed. That email was intercepted by the superintendent's office and by, was completely thrown me off guard. Right? So the board, that got fixed, so now the email says that when you email the board of ed, it goes from the president and vice president. There was no writing on the website this first time to ensure that there's complaints to be made, that your employee would not intercede these complaints and get ahead of them before they can be handled by you guys. But there was the issue of, it wasn't on there the first time saying she's going to get the emails. So how many complaints or how many issues have been buried because of this? It could happen to me. I witnessed it happen. Can't say it didn't happen. And I have witnesses for it, so I now have tons of it. We had conversations. But I'd like to thank you, Danielle, and the thing for handling that the right way for stuff, but there's still the concern. Does, who gets the emails? Is it still just you and the vice president that are getting these emails? I found it highly inappropriate that an employee would intercede, like, an official's email. Are you, yeah?
We, we have addressed the issue. We did make it clear on the website, so I can make sure or I can confirm exactly is where those emails are going and I will let you know. But
This just happened, though.
What?
You guys just reformed this.
Yes, exactly.
So how do we not know where it's going?
I just want to confirm to make sure that we're all, it got handled the way that we had discussed, so I just want to make sure of that and I will let you know.
Okay. And the last time, like I said, I'm ADA compliant. I have hearing issues. It does that. And I was trying to get explanation of who got my email, because I thought all of you got it. You didn't, apparently. I was misled on that concept, but then I was trying to like listen and then your assistant superintendent has recorded, clearly looks at one of your officials, does a cutthroat motion. Again, inappropriate. So I just think that there needs to be more standards upheld, like if I ever did something like that, forget it. I would be murdered, dragged to the streets, and, well, don't do that. But the whole point is you guys are appreciated. It's growth, community. It's very brave for people to stand up here and put their hearts in the thing. It's very, very, very brave. You weren't the attorney last time I was here, but when I saw this young gentleman before, you were kind of getting chuckled at. Inappropriate for an attorney to chuckle. And again, it's on the video, you can look at it. So I mean, this type of behavior, if I, I don't know. I just don't think it's appropriate, but we're not perfect. We can work past things and deal things. So if that can just get corrected and people are aware that top-tier leaders are just, I don't know, I guess just in control of everything. I don't know. But that's it. I appreciate your time. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. You said, oh, you're going to get back to me? But, okay. That email or phone call or?
It could be either.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will now close the public comment portion of the meeting. We don't have links and people back and forth. Okay. You do not need to go into executive session and our ethics training has been postponed. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?